Holy Father, be with us tonight as we go through the business for the town of Benson and for the people of Benson. Guide us in the way that you would have us to go. And get us out of, in our early times so Will can get to Alabama and I can get home. In one piece maybe. So be with us, be with the people that can't be here tonight for whatever reason. And be with them and keep them safe too. And give Will a safe trip. And everybody else that has a vacation, hope they have a trip there and back. In God's name we pray, amen. Let's stand in praise allegiance to the flag. Our praise and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we see. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Taylor Britt, to be sworn in. Come forward Britt. And bring whoever you want to with you. You can stand with it. Hold a Bible for her.
Very good. And then to write your name, put your name on the Bible. And I'm gonna say aye, and you say your name, and then I'll read everything. And once I get done, you continue to say so down the bottom. Alright, you ready? Aye.
I approve.
To solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina. And to the constitutional power and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof. That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state. Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States. That I will be alert and vigilant to enforce the criminal laws of this state. That I will not be influenced in any manner on account of personal bias or prejudice. And that I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of my office as a law enforcement officer. According to the best of my skill, abilities, and judgment. So, all right. Congratulations. And I just need you to sign this for me.
You can talk a little bit if you want to.
My name is obviously Taylor Britt. I bring all those five years of law enforcement experience with me. Glad to be here with everyone. And I want to thank my family for their support. And thank all of y'all for giving me the opportunity to work with y'all.
Okay, welcome to us.
Where are you coming from then?
Uh, Forehogs.
Forehogs? Oh, okay now. Big shoes to fill.
Yes sir.
I'm from Forehogs, that's the only reason I said.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The new, all the new business is really, there's a lot of things listed here. But there's a lot of pieces that's in the agenda. So Kim is gonna do this all in one breath.
Alright, so the first one is consider approval of ARPA fund grants. So we have to have certain policies in place with this COVID money that we're getting. So this is in regards to the 22 million, the 16 million. And we also got stormwater for 400,000. So we have to have all these policies in place. Conflict of interest, contract clause, cost principle, internal controls, nondiscrimination, program income, property management, and record retention. A lot of these we're already doing. But they're specific to ARPA. And Ike has been, he has looked over them. He's actually had them for a few months now. And he just got them to us. So we actually had a site visit yesterday, went really, really well. But we do need to send them these approved policies. So that's the first one.
I make a motion we approve these policies as presented. Can we make a motion yet?
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion we approve these policies.
All in favor say aye.
Opposed, no.
Alright, and the next few things are really just house cleanup stuff. So the very first one is an amendment to the state appropriation funds. This is for the L-shaped building over on Elm Street. So we originally did it for 1.6 million, but we actually got 1.915. So the 315 was a separate grant we need to add to that, that project. This building we are looking at doing a community building. And also have Parks and Recreation over there. So we'll bring the tutoring center back. We'll have Parks kind of in the, the back piece of it. And then the tutoring center up at the front where they were before. We've talked about doing like a little pocket library. And then if WIC wanted to come back, they'd have a space as well. But, so we, we were able to get money from state appropriations from this. So we just need to do an amendment because we got more than what we thought.
Okay, with that amendment that we're going to approve. Is there any limits on what we can use that extra money for?
It has to go towards the building. So we're using it towards like construction and, and we'll have to replace the roof. And there needs to be, probably some window seals need to be, windows need to be replaced.
So a total now is 1.?
1.915.
1.915. And we can't use any of this last appropriated money for paving?
No, this is just, this specifically is for the community center, for the L-shaped building. That's what it was for. That was what we, that, it is just for that.
It was deliberately done that way Will because that front part is, has been partly done already.
Yeah, but, but the parking lot is part of the building, is it not? We can't use that.
No, the parking lot. No, the parking lot for this building will be where the playground is. So it's that little spe- piece on Elm Street, not the one in the back. Unfortunately.
I was looking at a way to.
I know.
Out the back door.
We're, we're still looking at options too, so it's, it's on our radar.
This is the one that came from the Senate.
So, which building are you talking about?
The building right beside the fire department. Yeah. We call it the L-shaped building, but that's where they go right now and, well, before the fieldhouse was built, that's where they would go use the bathrooms with, for baseball.
Will you entertain a motion to approve this?
I make a motion we approve.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Okay.
Alright, the next few are gonna be some closing out of projects. So, for this one, it is an amendment to the AI, the AMI project. If y'all recall, the AMI project was done, see, I came in 2014, I think it was already a project in 2014. It's where we switched all the water and the electric meters into the, the AMI meters and did that whole communication system. We actually had $56,000 left over in that project fund. That project has been done, so we're gonna officially close it, we're gonna move the $56,000 into Fund 30, and then we're gonna move it back out and pay off some of these other projects that have been over expended, but you have to, there's, it's a paper thing. So we'll do, we'll do this to officially close the project and move the money into 30, and the next meeting I'll bring you guys a budget amendment to show where all the money went.
Okay, I understand that, but I don't understand 70 what thousand left?
You had 56, 948.
56, 56,000, 57,000 approximately left. Now, where is this money? It's not in the clouds, it's in, in, and I'm.
This is all accounting, so 56,000 is what was left in the project itself.
But it's part of our bank account.
Yes it is, yes.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Okay, Kim.
Alright. The next one is the AIA project. This project was actually short, 5444. So, we're going to do a transfer in of 5444 from this 56,000 that y'all just approved. And then officially close this project out, because this project has been done for some time as well, and it will balance, it will make this project a zero balance, and then we can close it. You're gonna close it in a memo later, but it will close the project.
So we're gonna use this money that we just appropriated back into that?
Yes, some of it, $5,400.
5,400.
5,400, yeah, 5,444. So we'll have to transfer into this project to zero it out and close it.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Okay.
Alright. The next one is, this is the NC 16 project. This project was the Main Street project where they moved the, the lines from Main Street behind the, the buildings and the, in the Main Street district. So again, we're going to transfer in the remainder of the $56,000, which is, would be 51504, to essentially balance it, but this project is still gonna be short. So we'll have to pull funds again from Fund 30 later if we have an excess in Fund 30 and pull funds into it later in the year to balance it out, which we pulled funds out of Fund 30 in 2022 to add back into this project as well, so. But this will not officially close it, but it will help lo- lower the gap of what it was over budgeted.
Okay, but this project was done six, seven years ago?
No, this project was done in 20, 2020, 2021, but it was over budget and.
I thought I was on the board back, back when this project started, when they started moving the lines from the back of the buildings. And I don't know if it makes any difference, but I'm just surprised that we have got projects that are four and five years old that hadn't been finished or the monies hadn't been.
The projects are done, this is the thing, the projects are done, but they were overspent. So these are the project statements that y'all got a few months back, it's, it's in the negative. So, it came in over budget, so what I'm trying to do is just strictly clean everything up and close some projects that we can close and get them off our books, and then close in some of these funding gaps. But this project, we did the original project ordinance in the 2017, 2018 budget year, but I don't think the project was done until later. But we've, we've already moved money into this fund at one time before, like in 2020, 2022.
Alright.
Make a motion we approve.
Did you make the motion?
Mm-hmm.
In favor say aye. Opposed, no. Alright, what's the next one?
This one is the load management project. So if you all remember, we did load management switches in 2015, 2016, and then we're taking them, now they're taking them off. Electric Cities actually gave us $10,000 towards that project, so I'm just again, trying to account for the $10,000, increase that line item budget to balance everything out. But this project is, I think she's still taking switches off, so this is not completely done yet. But, this is just adding a new revenue line or adding to that revenue line where we got 10,000 from Electric Cities.
But there's nobody now getting charged for that load management?
No sir.
All those fees are off.
Yes sir, they are.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Alright.
Alright, this last amendment is for Hurricane Florence insurance proceeds. We actually have $1,439 that was put into this account that was never used, so we're gonna pull it out and put it in Fund 10, and officially close this project, so this will zero the project out.
Kim, when you have an audit like we just did, outside audit comes in, does all of this stuff pop up to them?
Mm-hmm, it's all, it's, they have project statement, they have project statements, yes sir.
And they don't come up after two years and say, look, y'all need to clean this up?
No, if there's still money left in it or if it's in a negative balance, we have to, I mean, it has to go to zero, so they, they'll keep it on our books. I'm closing it because I'm.
If there's money left in it and it's finished, why wouldn't you have an amendment to do that the year that it, it's all finished?
Well, you have five years in a project. So, when we open a project, it stays open for five years, and then it, you can either officially close it out or you can extend the life of the project. The project on the accounting side.
Does it make our books look any better?
It won't, nothing will, it will all look the exact same, it's just where the money is. Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to approve zero.
I make a motion, we approve amendment one.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, no.
Alright, and then the final thing is a memo to the board to officially close out Fund 47, which is the AMI project, Fund 46, which is the INI project, and Fund 72, which is the Hurricane Florence project. And we need a motion to close these capital projects.
I make a motion we close this project.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Town managers report.
Um, we are closed tomorrow for Good Friday, so I hope everybody has a good Easter. I do want to give Derek and Tyler a little bit of a shout out. We had Clean Water Creek Week last week, and Tyler, of course, and did his thing on social media and got it out there. Derek is always our person for videos, which he did a great job in front of, was it Mango Swamp? For.
No, we were at Hannah Creek.
Hannah Creek, Hannah Creek. He did a coloring contest with the local elementary schools. You can go by the museum and see all those beautiful pictures posted on their window. But they did an amazing job talking that up, and that's part of our stormwater MS4 permit, and that is our public education piece. And so that gives us really high marks on our MS4, so I want to thank them for the work that they did. And we'll have story time on Monday for Easter at the library, so. That's all I got.
March.
Nothing to report?
Mike, Kim?
I'm good.
Will?
Only thing I've got, same old stuff. Our roads are being torn up and we need to submit some kind of letter to DOT because I think they've got to be responsible for Church Street, Lincoln Street, all these side street, Parish Drive. I know the town's been out there, they've dumped a bunch of gravel and dirt, it's already washed out. And we got big trucks going on side streets that they should never, ever be on. And I know the town's getting a lot of complaints, I'm getting a lot of complaints, and it's all, what are y'all gonna do about this when it's through and we have all these potholes? And that's why I requested the town before they put up the detours or when they did put them up, for us to film these roads before and after, because you've seen on the, the water line on 301 that we have just spent 30,000 on, because they are not gonna be responsible. And they told me out of their mouth that they're responsible, they own 301 and they own 50. But when it came to that water line, for us to get 40 foot, and we approved 30,000 for 40 foot. Now our boys are gonna try, they've got some pipe and they're gonna try to extend it a little further. But, I went out there and measured 40 foot, we're not getting anything. 40 foot is not, we were told that that water line runs from Parish Drive all the way to Church Street.
That's what it said.
Yeah, that 40 foot, it barely covers the roundabout where it's gonna go. And, and.
No, I think, I think the 40 foot was, was what covered the.
Yeah, it was 45, and we actually gave them some pipe and they did 75, but they're only, I think, from what Jeremy said is they're only gonna charge us for the 45. So we did get, it's, Jeremy informed me today it was outside of the travel lane, so.
Jeremy told me that he had extra pipe and he was gonna try to do that.
They did.
Get everything you can, but I'm just using that to tell you that DOT, when this is done, they're not gonna come back and look at any funds they've got left over to pave any of our secondary roads that they're using. They own 301 and 50, but the town owns, the town owns Parish Drive and Church Street and all of these other side streets. They had an incident yesterday, and right there on, on Lincoln Street and, and Church, one of the work trucks flew through that stop sign, busted a Lexus wide open.
Yeah, and I was there, we got a complaint over the weekend on South Lincoln Street of a, a hole we've actually, we had patched Friday, and I guess she drove through it Sunday or Saturday and it tore it up, but.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, so.
I mean, we're doing air.
And I sent that to DOT and they, they emailed me Tuesday and said that they're, they, contractor will be performing the initial repair tomorrow, which would have been Wednesday using backfill, and then we requested them to perform a temporary repair this afternoon that should last overnight. And then they've got an agreement with them for the permanent repair using asphalt, which will be done in a few weeks. So I mean, we're, when we see it, we're emailing them, so.
The only thing I can say to you is this, when, and, and we told them this last week, that when this is all said and done and that thing is working, then we're gonna get back together and we're gonna give them a list of what's been done and what's gotta be done and we'll go from there. So.
As long as we're gonna stay on top of it, because I've seen the person that hollers the loudest and the longest possibly get something done, but they are, these, I'm not gonna tell you what I think of it.
Well, it's, it's not gonna be a, a sweet trip where we get together.
Well, we've got DOT meeting the 16th of April, but it's just on 95 and you bring up, that did come up, one of the, one of the guys at the meeting, and there's about 50, 75 people there from DOT, but it's, it's concerning our detours and, and 95 really? But they keep bringing up the roundabout, so there may be somebody there that, that needs to know just what we're going through with, with all these detours and the way they've got them. And the damages they're causing. But that's all I've got.
I'm anxious.
Y'all have a great Easter.
I'm anxious to see the roundabout finished and working.
And y'all saw where, did y'all see the email that DOT's working on the ADA ramps as well?
Yeah, they've finished the ones on Lee Street, haven't they?
I, I haven't been to Lee Street, but I know the ones on Church were done.
Monday?
Mm-hmm. Yep. So they're working through that too.
One thing I did find out about the road that runs down beside I-95, that there's gonna be a, a, to 242.
The road that connects to Cub, it goes to the billboard like you're going towards Hampton, is, is the service road, and it stops at the billboard. Yeah.
But it goes all the way and it was never intended to be a, a road, but they made it, and you can come right off the end of the bridge and, and go straight down Cub Road until it gets to the hotel and there's gonna be a way to get off.
No, I think it's gonna stop where it's at. It stops where it's at, stops at that billboard.
But they got.
They've got a for sale sign up there, I'm wondering if the people that are trying to sell the property are thinking about doing that, but it's.
Well, there's more to it than that.
Okay, alright, well, that top secret stuff.
I was waiting for that. I just want to say one thing, we got a couple of minutes, I want to get out of here, but probably a lot of you know about the company in Turkey that was gonna put a plant at Benson. It would have been a tremendous thing for the town. But when we got down to the final throes, we had a meeting here in this room and ate lunch and then went to the building, out the new million square foot building, it's actually 500,000 square feet now, and found out that the people that own that building would not lease it to them because they had to have clean, clean rooms, and that was a lot of work that would go out to be done to the building, so they elected not to. And I'd rather you not put this in the paper.
Well, don't tell him.
Because it's, it's still close information, but we did everything we could to try to get somebody to build a building for them or to lease a building to them, and the only thing that the other group would do would, would be to sell the building. And the price that they gave them was, was high.
Is there not?
We.
Somebody else interested though?
Well, we, we, we got with the people in Raleigh and, and said, do what you can, because this guy was good to work with, even though they may not have all the agreements with the US government. But they went to Fayetteville and Fayetteville has a building and they're bringing their people from Turkey down there next, next week or week after next to make sure everything's okay and they intend to put it in Fayetteville. I hate to see that I spent some kind of hours working on that and to have the rug pulled out from under you right at the last. to have the rug pulled out from under you right at the last minute is, uh, is, uh... Anything else you need to bring before the board? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I made that motion.
Everybody have a good, everybody in favor, say aye. Approve, no. Everybody have a good Easter. Eat a few eggs.
You saying how much eggs?